Right.
The muck will already put in the air there. People can be pissed when they let it melt and all the snow is pushed into their chain link flots. What have you done, Mike?
We ready to start, gents? We'll call this meeting to order of the Evanston City Council on January 18th. I've asked council for President Welling to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You're welcome. Glad to see you here. We need to start with a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that?
Every member of the president can be have a flag.
Excellent, thank you. We've got an agenda before us. Is there any changes to that agenda? If there's not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Mr. Welling? Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? We have an agenda. We've got the council minutes for January 4th. Any concerns regarding those minutes? If not, we'll acknowledge those as they've been prepared and go on to the work session minutes for January 11th. Any comments or questions there? If not, we'll acknowledge those as well and we'll go on to the bills. We've got a warrant register with today's date on it. Questions, comments, concerns? I'll entertain a motion to approve the bills.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, Mr. Welling, seconding. No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That is approved as well. We'll go to the revenue and expenditure report for October and November. I guess we do, we need to do those separately or can we do them together? Can we do those together? Can we do that? We'll entertain those together, I guess. If there's questions or comments on either one of those reports before we move on, though, we can do that. If there's none, I'll entertain a motion to approve both the October and November revenue and expenditure reports. Mr. Ottley, Mr. Sellers, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That is approved as well. Council comments. Mr. Lynch, please. Mr. Otley.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Brooks.
Not a thing tonight.
Mr. Welling.
I just have one thing to remind everybody, invite people to the Jump Start Evanston program tomorrow night at 7:00 at the Portland Road Room, 6:00. I'd be an hour late.
You're gonna miss the whole thing, then.
Holy crap. 6:00 PM. And it's every Wednesday for how many weeks?
Six. And the seventh is a little bit different.
Okay.
So if you come tomorrow night, we'll make sure you know what to say.
Okay.
Excellent.
But just to invite everybody out, it's a great program. Rocko reporting, had 20 people signed up.
Right now, we have 12.
I'm sure there's people who just come and like me, want to sit through it and talk my wife out of trying to start a business.
Why would you do that? You should encourage her.
That's all I have.
Absolutely.
I'm sure we would.
Yes, we would. Not only you, David, but we. Mr. Sellers.
Just, um, those who don't know, the city crews just been getting hammered today. So the roads have been closed up there on Sioux Drive all day long. Looks, from what I can see, it looks like a pretty big job. So thanks to them and all the hard work they always do.
Mr. Welling? Nothing? Well, I don't think I have anything to add other than just echo the thanks to the city crews and quite frankly, all the city employees in general, I think, across the board. We see a, we do great, great work and I appreciate the commitment that everybody has made. We will move on to our public hearings and special orders and we need to start there with a hearing regarding the transfer of liquor license. Mr. Bowles, will you be our hearing officer, I suspect?
I will, Your Honor. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comment regarding the application to transfer the ownership of the retail liquor license from Allgood LLC, DBA Munchies, back to Bad Company, DBA Michael's Bar and Grill at 1101 at 1011 Front Street in Evanston, Wyoming. The application for the transfer has been reviewed by the staff of the Liquor Commission and the City Clerk's Office has been found to be complete. Notice of this hearing has been published in a newspaper of general circulation as required by statute. All those who testified to here tonight need to approach the podium, state your name and mailing address. The issues are set forth in the city code, which in summary means that the license is not to be transferred if it's determined that the needs of the community are already met by existing licenses in the vicinity. So, Mr. Ringer, are you gonna speak to this?
Sure.
Okay, why don't you come forward, please?
Uh, Michael Ringer, important to set to the front street of Evanston.
Welcome.
It's, the last lease did not work out. And so what's happening is I'm getting the license back and I may be negotiating with somebody to, to sell it. So, once he goes back to me, I'm going back again to get the transfer in, which I'll come with and that's all I can say. Entire deal, though.
Any questions for Mr. Ringer?
I don't believe I have any.
Anything else you want to say, Mike? Thank you. Anybody else present who wishes to speak to this application, either for or against? There being no one, Your Honor, I'm going to close unless the council has a question for anyone.
Everybody, I guess it's all in order. It all looks, uh, complete. Is that correct?
In that case, the hearing is closed.
Okay, thank you. I guess the next thing we would need to do is consider a motion to approve the transfer of ownership of this. Mr. Lynch?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Good luck.
Yeah. There's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, thank you, sir. We will go on to some board appointments. We've got several, as we always do at the beginning of the year. Would you like to talk about these separately or together? What's your pleasure?
Together.
Together? You okay with together? I'll just go down here and read off these names and then someone would like to make a motion. I'd like you to consider, excuse me, Sarah Pullins to serve on the Urban Renewal Board for a five-year term ending January of 2027. Trudy Lim to be reappointed to the revolving loan fund board for a three-year term to end January 2025. Dean Barker and Tim Lynch to both be reappointed to the urban systems boards. Those terms would end January 2024. Tim Ottley to be reappointed to the UNA County Economic Development Commission for a three-year term to end January 2025. David Welling to be reappointed for a two-year term on the Emergency Services Joint Powers Board. That term would end January 2024. And Evan Perks to be reappointed to the Lodging Tax Board for a three-year term ending January 2025. I think that's all of them that we've got for today, I think, yeah. So entertain, entertain a motion to approve those several appointments.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Welling with a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Sellers, is that your second, I'm hearing? Mr. Sellers, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent. Appreciate all those that serve on those boards. Oftentimes, they're quite thankless in general, but nevertheless, it is a important, uh, important responsibilities, all of them. So thank you for being willing to serve. We have no consent agenda items, so we'll go on to our unfinished business and we'll go there to ordinance 2106. Mr. Bowles, please.
Your Honor, this ordinance of the city amends section 7-7 of the city code to authorize the governing body to adopt needed regulatory building codes by resolution.
We talked about this two weeks ago, I know.
We did. We inadvertently left this off the agenda for the last meeting. What this does is it enables the city to adopt these codes, which we have to adopt every few years by resolution instead of doing it by ordinance, which is what we have been doing, so.
And there's, is there any change to the wording of this? I didn't see any changes. There are no?
Not one word.
Okay. We've, uh, this is a second reading, so I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2106 on second reading. Mr. Lynch?
Second.
Mr. Ottley, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved. And we will go on to, do, 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 uh, new business. And our first item there is a motion to accept the financial disclosure statements from the mayor, city council, city clerk, and city treasurer. Take us away. Trudy, you're on.
I don't know if the mic's on, is it?
Yeah. I think it is, yeah.
We do this motion every year. Each city council member, the mayor, the city treasurer, and the city clerk have to fill out a form per state statute stating that if they have basically accounts at the same banks as the city of Evanston. And the statute reads that anyone who has authority to decide on public funds has to disclose those types of things. So that's why I had you all fill out the forms and it just goes in the file for next year. It's kind of a conflict of interest statute is what it's about.
Any questions for Trudy before we? I'll entertain a motion to approve those several financial disclosure statements.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, thank you. We'll go on to resolution 2203. Mr. Bowles, read that title for us, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the governing body officially designates UNA Bank, Wells Fargo, First Bank Evanston, and Bank of the West as the depository for monies of the city.
Thank you. Ms. Lim.
And again, this is another requirement through state statute that we have to designate what banks we use. And these are our depository banks, so the ones that we use day in and day out for putting money in and out. And those banks listed are the ones we use right now.
Excellent. There hasn't been much changes in those banks for quite some time.
Not for a long time, no. In fact, at one time, we didn't even do this resolution every year because there was no changes. But our auditors asked us to do it every year, so we are doing that now.
Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Welling with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ottley, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, thank you. Resolution 2204, Mr. Bowles, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the acceptance of a CASL payroll year-end services proposal to provide the city with Affordable Care Act reporting and data.
Thank you. Ms. Lim.
What this is, is each year, we have to report to the IRS and also give the same information to the employees stating that they were offered insurance and whether or not they accepted it or not. And then our software, we have the ability, if we purchase the module, to do these ourselves, but we do not have that module that can print these reports. So the last several years, we have just contracted with CASL to do those for us. You know, maybe in the future, we'll look at that module, but we haven't needed it up to this point, so.
Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Ottley?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding. Any discussion on the motion?
So the total cost for this is a little over $2,000?
No, it will not exceed that. And I was just looking, I believe last year, we paid $960. They give us a digital file and we print them out and mail them, so we don't, they don't file it electronically for us. So I believe, I'd have to look, but I believe last year, we paid $960. But it says it will not exceed 2,000.
That's the, the $10,000 budget.
Any further discussion? If there's none, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, thank you. We'll go on to resolution 2205. Mr. Bowles, read that title for us, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the execution of an agreement with Forsgren Associates is for engineering services for the Evanston Roundhouse Trailhead Access Improvement Project.
Mr. Barker. Thank you. Bowles.
Good evening. This is a, a tap grant that we received. If you recall, this agreement's taken a long time to, to get to this point. We went through YDOT's selection process. Forsgren was shortlisted and selected. Then we went through the negotiation period and that's taken quite some time to negotiate a fee on this. And then we had some contract things that YDOT hadn't changed, so we've been back and forth quite a bit. So we're finally now to a point to get this approved. And so, yeah, this is for the Roundhouse Courtyard area with, like I said, that tap grant money that we received.
When you, and maybe it's just, don't want to put you on the spot here, but when you talk about, went through the YDOT and we talked briefly before the meeting, could, just briefly, can you explain how, how a particular company has arrived at as being the, uh, successful bidder, or whatever you want to say?
Yeah, so with this federal money, YDOT has a process that they go through. You have to select one of their consultants that is on their approved list. So we form a selection committee. Geez, we did this quite a long time ago. I can't remember who's on the selection, but usually it's city council members and staff and maybe some other people that would be involved that would have interest in the type of project that we're doing from the public or from any organization. So they're shortlisted and then they rank them. And so it's criteria, it's qualification based on these projects. We can't do fee-based, so we don't, they don't give us a proposal. It's all based on their qualifications and then we rank them and then whoever has the best ranking is selected. And then from there, we negotiate a fee with them on that, if that makes sense.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barker before we move on?
Will this be launched this summer?
The project will not be constructed this year, no. We have such a long, we have to go through the entire NEPA process, send them letters, get responses back. So it'll, it'll probably be a year from now. So we'll have about 12 months to go through the entire environmental process and then design and then bid it out, so.
Thank you.
If things go quickly, yeah, they could, I guess, but we have like two years for our completion date.
The chances of that going that quickly, though, is pretty slim.
Yeah, I don't want to give you a false sense of hope that it'll be built this summer, but I guess it could be if things, everything went perfectly great, you know, so.
As council members, we get that question, well, wasn't this passed and nothing's happened for a year, so that's why I ask.
Yeah, these, especially with this federal money, they, the process takes a long, long time. Because once we get to a 30% design, we have to submit it and get approval from all these different government agencies and then, and then we can move forward to final design, so.
Excellent, thank you. Is there an introduction on this resolution? Mr. Lynch? Motion, is there a second? Welling, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That is approved and we'll go on to resolution 2206. Mr. Bowles, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the execution of an amendment to the contract with Forsgren Associates is to provide engineering services for the Sage Street Waterline Replacement Project.
Thank you, sir. Barker.
Um, yeah, so this one, we already are under contract with Forsgren on this, on Sage Street to do the block there between Third and Fourth? Yeah, Third and Fourth. We, uh, the reason that, again, Forsgren was selected on that one, we were under the amount where we had to do a public bid process and they were the ones designing the waterline for ECDC. And the reason why we're replacing that waterline, we discovered it's a four-inch water main and they will not get their fire flows based on that size of main. And so we decided to upsize it to an eight-inch main. And the reason now why we're adding this change order to the contract is because we've had two breaks this last fall in front of the church there. And, um, so Herm and Gordon and I, we discussed it and recommend that we extend that project one more block because we've had so many problems with that line there as well. And while they're there and tore up, just to get it all done to the next quarter.
Then once it's tore up, we might as well just fix it.
Yeah. It'll improve fire flow in that area significantly, so, not only for ECDC, but also for the residents that live there on that street.
Any questions? Any questions for Mr. Barker before we move on? Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Perks with a motion. Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 2207, Mr. Bowles, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the execution of a licensed training provider agreement with the American National Red Cross is to enable the police department to continue Red Cross training courses.
Thank you, sir. Chief French.
Yes, sir, Your Honor, members of the council. We need, we have reoccurring basic life skills and life-saving skills and CPR training we should be doing every couple of years. We've branched, we've reached out to hospital in the past, fire department in the past, and what we've done recently is we've had some officers trained by the American Red Cross, like instructed in-house, that will simplify our reoccurring training. And this contract with the American Red Cross will get those instructors certified, allow them to teach the Red Cross course to our officers to make recertification easier.
Excellent. And this is something that's been going on for quite a while, haven't, is this a new thing?
No, this is a new thing, where this is the first time we'll be, we'll have in-house Red Cross, yes, certified instructors.
I was thinking, I guess I was connecting, connecting the police department and the ambulance together and I was thinking that that was something that, that was done in the past, but this.
And they have instructed ours, officers in the past, and sometimes we don't meet that reoccurring training as quickly as we should. And we're also looking into adding in the future, bloodborne pathogen, the defibrillators and oxygen, too.
Excellent. Good deal.
Is this a one-year or two-year certification?
Two-year certification. That's correct.
Excellent.
Does, this covers first aid and basic first aid and stuff like that?
Basic life-saving skills. This first one right here, our officers will be instructed to teach basic life-saving skills in CPR.
Done CPR time or two myself. Rarely successful, but I've done it. Is there an introduction on this resolution? Mr. Sellers with a motion, is there a second? Mr. Lynch, seconding. Any discussion?
I'm sure with COVID, it's made it harder to get in the hospital.
I imagine so, yeah.
And their training system, just like ours, through the VA, they've all changed. So I think probably, probably the best move to move that.
Thank you.
Is this just gonna be for the police department?
We'll open the training to any, any, uh, any city agency it wants. The sheriff's office actually just attended the same training. They're entering into the same contract to do the same course.
Any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Resolution 2208, Mr. Bowles, read that title for us, please.
Your Honor, this resolution is of the governing body and it sets the green fees and other related fees for the Purple Sage Municipal Golf Course for the 2022 golf season.
Thank you. Mr. Ethers.
Evening, Mayor and Council. The spreadsheet that I gave you just simply shows you the increases that I'd like to see for the upcoming season. It doesn't really affect green fees, per se, for the fear of chasing golfers away, but it does do punch passes, which are reduced at times, so. And the other one is cart fees, range balls, mostly optional fees that people will pay.
Quick questions for Mr. Ethers. We've talked about these before, go ahead, please.
So the projected, um, two projected income, is the $5,000 over last year, is that what you're projecting?
No, I think we're, I think we're gonna get $20,000 plus.
Over, how many speeds?
Yes. With the increase in red, I'm looking at $20,000 increase if we sell consistent with last summer.
Your punch passes, how many is in a punch pass round of $50?
There's 10 nine-hole rounds.
So that's a good deal.
It is a great deal. They buy those up pretty, pretty quickly.
Thank you.
Further questions, Mr. Ethers? Is there an introduction on this resolution? Mr. Lynch, motion, is there a second? Mr. Ottley, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Resolution 2209, Mr. Bowles, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the submission of an application for a grant to the Economic Development Administration is for the Bear River Greenway Wetland Trails and Interpretive Project.
Good, please.
Good evening. So there are two resolutions here and they're both to the Economic Development Administration. And I believe in your file or packet, it describes a little bit about the two categories that we're going to be applying for as well. It's part of the American Rescue Plan to recover from COVID-19, from the COVID-19 pandemic. The funding is to strengthen, diversify, and fortify communities from future economic shocks, such as a pandemic. Hopefully, we don't have too many more. We also have the added issue of being a coal-impacted region. So with the coal mine closing in the coming years, that also affects our economy. The first grant is in the category of the travel, tourism, and outdoor recreation and it is for communities facing challenges with significant outdoor recreation sectors, which we have. It's entitled the Bear River Greenway Wetlands Trails and Interpretive Project and it will focus on the wetland area that's kind of behind or to the east of the big pond, the big ice pond. It's about a 10-acre area there. It will do a couple of things. It will improve the concrete trail loop that already exists and it will recreate a wood, a wooden or a trex boardwalk around that area, that wetland area. It'll create a bird blind, a wildlife observation tower, and interpretive areas and signage and. and meander planting, or edge planting around the edge of the pond. It's the natural next component of the Greenway Plan, which is indicated in the 2004 master plan. The results will attract more visitors and tourists to the site, and one of the more positive things that it will do is provide free, healthy, and educational activity in a designated low-income census tract area. Everything north of I-80 is considered in that census tract or opportunity zone. The cost is about $1.7 million, and we do have to have a 20% match with this. So if the city provides $330,000, and the Bear Project has agreed to pitch in $30,000 for this project. The grant application is due February 1st, and we should be notified of award depending on how many applications come in between March and April timeframe. So if it's awarded, if we are awarded funding, this project could be completed as early as the end of next year, so.
Good. I'm just reading here, when you said how much we're, I was thinking here that it says that the EDA has allocated $3 billion, so I wondered if we were applying for that whole amount, but I guess not.
Well, they kind of, in those different categories, they put different amounts in there.
That's a sizable grant.
It is.
And, you know, the matching funds to those grants are always a concern. We'll just have to evaluate, you know, what we can do down the road. It's a great, great grant, I hope we were successful in.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mika before we move on?
Thanks for your hard work.
Sure. I'm not done yet.
Is there a introduction on this resolution? Mr. Welling with the motion, is there a second? And Mr. Sellers, seconding? Any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's passed. Resolution 2210, Mr. Bowles, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the submission of an application for a grant to the Economic Development Administration. It's for the Impact UNEA Business Incubator Project.
Thank you, sir.
So this falls into the category of the Economic Adjustment Assistance, and this is for communities to plan, build, and innovate, and put people back to work. So it's very broad. The Impact UNEA Business Incubator Project will create a combination of office, co-working, tech, and laboratory space for local entrepreneurs in what is currently known as Hotel Evanston on Front Street. This three-story building is currently owned by the Urban Renewal Agency, and they are agreeable to this project. But the entire incubator will be operated by Impact 307, which is a statewide business mentoring program supported by the University of Wyoming, and it is specifically for high-growth, innovation-driven startups. They currently have locations in Laramie, Casper, and Sheridan, and along with Impact 307, Governor Gordon's Wyoming Innovation Partnership, or WIP, has identified Evanston as the next location. Impact 307 has been around for about 15 years now, and they've had a number of successes. They've successfully launched 200 companies in that timeframe, and between 2018 and 2020, they launched 87 of them, so.
Wow.
We anticipate similar success with 20 new businesses started in the next five years that employ three to four workers each. The kinds of companies launched include Falcon Technologies, that was the first company that came out of the program, and what they do is they build computers specifically for day traders. I'm not exactly sure what that means, but they've been successful. And then another kind of company that's been started has been Bison Kings Game Studios in Casper, and what they do is they create adventure video games for consoles and for computers. And then another kind of company that's been started out of Sheridan is called Muscle Work, or Muscle Shock, rather, and what they do is they create pain relief creams and gels and bath salts. So it's a variety of different kinds of companies.
Excellent.
So ultimately, the plan is to renovate Hotel Evanston into a business incubator with offices, co-working space, and some retail, possibly on the first floor, and offices and technology and laboratory space on the second and third floors. Impact 307 will rent the incubator from the city of Evanston. And again, we want to create three to four new businesses each year, but even more than that, it will activate and revitalize this block of our downtown, our historic downtown, that doesn't really have an anchor at this point, and has struggled to have an anchor business for quite some time.
Will they lease that from the city or from the Urban Renewal Agency?
From the city, because we're the applicant, so, yeah. And URA is agreeable to deeding the property to the city. The cost of this project is pretty significant. In total, to do all three floors, it's $7.2 million. And again, they are asking for a 20% match, but we were kind of getting there with some in-kind funds. So the city match, if agreed tonight, would be $360,000. The value of the building would be included, and it's estimated to be around $100,000 to $300,000 in value, and then work previously conducted on the building is between $750 and $1 million. And again, this application is due February 1st, and we should be notified sometime in the spring.
This is big stuff. Please, go ahead.
Certainly not my only concern, but out of these two projects, we're looking at over, almost, what, $600,000, $700,000 coming out of the coffers. Where's that money, where do we project that money to come from on the match?
Because I got her into this mess. So this is, we brought this up at a work session a couple of weeks ago. I threw Mika a lot of information, and she, of course, became an expert in it in two weeks, but it is a lot of money, and that's what we talked about at the work session. It's a lot of money that we're going after, but the capital that we're matching with is not that significant in the grand scheme of things, if you're talking. And obviously, this is your decision, you can yea or nay this. It's 660, somewhere in that neighborhood, $1,000 to leverage nearly $10 million in grant funding from the EDA. I don't know what the dollar means anymore, but, because they apparently have a money printer laying around, but these are risky projects. And we've seen the Hotel Evanston kind of sit there being unused for 20 years, so we figured if they're going to have grants where you can request up to $10 million, this is a shot that we can take that's kind of a hail mary and see if we can work something out and put that building to use. And I'm trying not to ramble, because I tend to do that, but it just so happened at the same time, Impact 307, through the governor's WIP, was designated funding to expand Evanston, so we thought that was kind of a consistent use that we identified in our target market study, that the governor had identified in his WIP program, and that we had a vacant building in the downtown that could be put to use that, you know, has no infrastructure, has no seismic. I mean, before you can even occupy that building, you're looking at $2.5, $3 million. So I guess if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer it, but.
Well, I'd just like to add that this opportunity probably won't happen again. So it might be worth it to try to get this funding while we can.
What is, go ahead, Mr. Ross, you've got more questions, go ahead. I just wondered, what is the likelihood of us being successful, either one of these grants, for that matter? Any idea? That's probably a.
Well, I would say that the tourism grant, the recreation grant, probably has a better chance of success, and we've been, it's been indicated that that would be the case. The incubator one, maybe not as much, but if we don't apply, then we have zero chance of getting any kind of funding.
And as we move forward with it, is there a way to, I don't know, if we're successful in getting the grant, but then down the road, we decide that it's going to be difficult to come up with the match, can we?
You can send the money back.
I'm not suggesting we would want to do that, but if for some reason we, something happens and we have no ability to come up with the matching funds, we are not locked in.
Right. And my thoughts on getting the funding for the incubator, I think that we have a chance of getting some of the money, but certainly not all of it.
Okay. It would be nice to see something go on in that building that has been sitting there for a great long time, and it's going to take a unique fit, just given the way things with the city has evolved. I mean, it's not, Front Street isn't I-80 anymore, and that's a big difference from what it was back in the day, so. But it would be fantastic to see something happen there. Mr. Sellers, go ahead.
So what would be the contingency if we only got half the money? I mean, what's, are you going to have a building that's?
No, that's a great question. So if, let's say we only get $3 million for the incubator project, we could go after some state funding to complete it, which would be through the Wyoming Business Council.
Would they consider helping us with our match grant, or is that legal for them to do, or is that?
Yes, because this is federal money, state money can match it. Yes.
The amount that the city is obligating here is roughly a 5% match. I think we, during our, we don't want to over-leverage ourselves, and that was kind of the thinking here, is if we did a 20% match of $7.2 million, you're looking at $1.5, somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.5 million, and we don't have that. So we're trying to get creative with in-kind match money and also cash, because, I mean, you have to have cash to finish the project, so. And I do understand that we have several projects in my department that are under construction right now, so these are, this is another huge ask, but it's in the wheelhouse of our budget, so.
Well, I guess the thing I'm thinking of with both of them is, we've tried a variety of things over the last many years that have not worked. This is an awful big step, but sometimes it takes guts to step forward a little bit. Any further questions?
Depending on how much money we get, I mean, can determine whether or not we move forward with the project, really.
Exactly, true, true, yeah. So if we're noticed that we are successful in either one, I guess it would apply to either one of them, we will be noticed of what funds we've been granted, if we have been granted, and then we'll have to reevaluate one way or another pending that information. Until then, we're not necessarily obligating ourselves to anything until we know exactly what we have to run the chance of getting. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Is that wrong or right? Okay.
We've made the deeding of the building contingent on a successful grant, and so it's a shot in the dark, for sure.
Sure.
We got Mika, so.
Well, is there a reintroduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce the motion to pass.
Mr. Perks with the motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Welling, seconding? Discussion?
I guess my biggest concern, I guess, is with the building itself. Over the last year, I know we had an opportunity, the Urban Renewal had an opportunity to sell that and put it back in the private sector. I know it wasn't for much money, but it doesn't seem to me that Urban Renewal is getting anything out of this deal either. So that's my biggest concern. I don't have a problem with the incubator program. I think it's possibly at work. I think that building is just not, in my view, is just not designed for that. $7 million into that building, I think you could build quite a nice building somewhere. And again, that building has had the opportunity to go back in the private sector by two people this past year. That's my concern.
Valid? There's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed?
Aye.
One nay there. Okay, thank you. I guess that's it for our agenda. We'll go to comments from departments. Rocco, while you're right there, do you have anything more from your department?
I'll steal the mic here. Yeah, again, reminder, Jump Start Evanston's first night is tomorrow night at 6 o'clock in the Roundhouse. It's totally free, you don't have to compete for funding, you can just come and learn and have a good time, so there's that. Also, wanted to thank Mika for all of her hard work. Seems like, no matter what I throw at her, she picks it up and runs with it. She makes me look good. And Mickey, as well, she just got through with business license renewals, and I know that that was a headache, so kudos to her. And if you haven't renewed your business license, please do that, and be nice to Mickey.
Excellent, thank you, Rob. Chief Rannish, you have anything for us?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lim? Ms. Perk?
No, Your Honor.
Mr. Eilers, you have anything for us? Ms. Harris?
No, sir.
Mr. Bowles?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. Public participation, is there anyone that, here from the public, that would like to address the council for any reason? Welcome, sir.
Honorable mayor, a member of the council, my name is Aaron Healy. I live at 144 Lodge Pole Drive here in Evanston, Wyoming. I'm not here to complain about an issue or address a certain item that was on the agenda. I'm here to give thanks. I moved here just last year, and in 2014, I moved to the Salt Lake area after a long stint in Las Vegas. Kind of dawned on me this last couple of years, it may be the suburb, urban life is not for me. So in the intervening years since I moved to Salt Lake City, I came up here to Evanston, bought a lot of tickets, partaking the beauty around, the mountains, rivers, lakes, and kind of get to know the area. And then, when I bought a lot of tickets, I found myself just traipsing around the streets here of Evanston, figuring out, you know, I won the Lotto, wouldn't be a bad place to live. Well, it's hard to say I didn't win the Lotto, but this last year, I was able to scrape enough money together to buy the house I just listed to you guys where I live. Like I said, after 20 years working in journalism, bebopping around from big city to big city, suburb to suburb, I think I found a place that fits me to a T. So I'm hoping to transition, so I don't have to keep driving back to Salt Lake, because it's rather expensive, it's about $25 a day. But I'd just like to thank you all. Everyone here has been very warm and welcoming, and look forward to getting to know all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Glad you're here.
Glad it's a good experience for you, we're glad to have you. Thanks for coming. Wow, I kind of don't even want to adjourn now, I want to just kind of enjoy that for a minute, thank you very much. Yeah, that doesn't happen very often. Excellent. Well, anybody else that would like to? If not, well, I guess we'll adjourn, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.